All right, let's go ahead and get started being mindful of everybody's time. So real quick, and this is a recorded webinar or Zoom town hall. So we'll have the full thing of this later on today up on YouTube. My name is Leslie Jing-Luski. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Avalon Center. And we've got quite a few people on our, on our staff and part of the Avalon family that is on with us today. And basically, the way this is going to go is the town hall meetings are going to be done the second Wednesday of every month, and it will be a different topic. So we're pretty excited about this. And today's topic is we're going to talk about teen dating violence. And we have our, one of our staff members is going to do a nice presentation. I'm going to let her introduce herself. We do have Terry Kristin on, or Teresa Kristin on the line today, and she is going to give a quick update on Avalon at the end, or at the end. But we're going to start with Candace. And actually, Terry, did you want to do it at the beginning or the end? I wasn't sure.
Why don't I do it now? And it will allow a little more time for folks to see people coming on.
Okay.
Well, the, the question I get asked the most frequently lately is how are we doing? How are we doing what we do? And what kind of things we're seeing in the community? So I'm going to answer those questions. There's always a lot to talk about with regard to Avalon, but I'm going to start with that. And then later, maybe after the presentation, if folks have questions, they can ask. So since the pandemic started, we had to work very quickly to reorganize how we delivered services. And we did that last spring. We, we had a lot of help from the community, from the CARES Act, from the Community Foundation, from the county to help us get all of the equipment and things that we needed for remote counseling and case management. So one thing we noticed fairly quickly when everything went into lockdown was a sharp rise in calls to our 24-hour crisis helpline. So we track that every year. And we noted over 50% increase in calls from previous years. And nationally, I believe it's higher than that. It's more like a 75% increase. So we noted that that was happening ironically, or not so ironically, maybe understandably, the calls that we were getting were far more serious and more potential lethality in those calls. So it was very scary for us and for the police that we work with very closely. And I very quickly give you an example of something that happened very recently. There was a domestic violence call by local police, and a woman was held at gunpoint with her children. And we really, we off, we spoke with her. We spoke with the police officer, and we were, she was offered shelter. But in what's happened is they're increasingly saying no to shelter. And that's because they're fearful about the pandemic. They're fearful, fearful of the, of going to a shelter situation with their children during the pandemic. So we have a lot of concerns about survivors, folks who are living in very abusive, sometimes very violent, potentially very violent situations, and they're choosing to live with that. So, you know, we're struggling to do the best that we can. Our shelter staff are all there. We're still open. We're still providing those services. There's some things we've had to modify because of COVID. We look forward to all of this being over. So that's what I'm going to stop there. And because I, you know, I can go on if you let me. So.
I appreciate you, Terry. We all do. And so without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Candace Fox. And she is going to, she has a wonderful presentation on, we'll end it with a small Q and A if anybody has any questions. So I'm going to turn the floor over to you, girl.
Hi, everybody. My name is Candace Fox, and I'm the coordinator of our Youth Services Program here at Avalon. I love my job. This is something that I do every single day. I talk about dating with teenagers, something that's relatable to everyone, no matter where you come from or who you are, what your race, what your sexual orientation is, what's been going on in your life, you can talk about dating. So it's something that everybody wants to listen to. So it's nice to go into a classroom and have everybody's attention. But also, some of the conversations can be kind of heavy because as we're talking about right now, teen dating violence. So I'm going to start my little presentation for you guys. And hopefully, we can see everything and everything goes smooth because this world is full of technology now with our pandemic, but sometimes the technology doesn't work with us. So that's something that I experience on the daily. And though I'd like to say that I'm a young millennial that is so savvy in all this thing, all these things, I'm not so much a lot of the time. So without further ado, this is February, which is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. So the first thing that I wanted to just share to you guys is what it is. Everybody's pretty knowledgeable probably on this call because we're interested in the topic. And it's important to us, whether we work for Avalon or you're on the board, or it's something that you're really passionate about. It's happening. We want to talk about it. We want to talk about it on a local level, but we also want to talk about it on a national level. So teen dating violence is a type of intimate partner violence that occurs between two young people in an intimate relationship. Why are we talking about this? Like I said, it's happening. One out of three teenagers is in some kind of abusive relationship. That is the national average. It hasn't changed over many years. That's what's going on. And the reason why I like to talk about it, not because it's just my job, but unhealthy relationships can start early and last a lifetime. And that's why we're so passionate here in the Youth Services Program is because we realize that our effect on these students affects their entire lives. We're more on the prevention side of domestic violence. We want to be out there teaching people how to have a healthy relationship. And what is healthy, what is not healthy? What are the red flags? What are, how to set a boundary with somebody? These are all things that maybe some people don't like to talk about, and we're just happy to have the conversation because like I said, we're passionate about what we do. Without further ado, I want to do some national statistics. Sometimes when you look at national statistics, it seems not relatable. It's just something that you see that, oh, that's going on somewhere in the world. It's not going on here. It's not going on in our school. It's not going on with my kids. It's not going on in my neighborhood type situation. But the first thing I want to look at is these studies are happening on a national level, and these, and these statistics are out there for everybody to see. So I got these from the CDC, and you guys can just Google these statistics. But nearly one in 11 females and approximately one out of 15 male high school students report having experienced physical dating violence within the last year. One in nine female and one in 36 male high school students report having experienced sexual dating violence within the last year. And 26% of women and 15% of men who were victims of contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime first experienced these or other forms of violence by that partner before the age of 18. Before the age of 18. That's why we're going to the schools and talking about it. That's why we're here now. That's why I'm talking about it now. This is happening to our youth across, across the national borders. But this is the next thing that I wanted to talk about. Does anybody have any questions first? These are all things that you can find online. Is there something that, anybody have questions before I go into talking about Williamsburg and what we do here? No? So this picture here is at a local high school. And of course, we're not showing anybody's face. We want to make sure that we keep everybody's confidentiality. But I just wanted to show you that we're there before, pre-pandemic. And these statistics are pre-pandemic as well. We have done our virtual Healthy Relationships presentations within all of the schools in our local area. These are just the ones from the in-person presentations that I miss doing. Without, so this is from 2019 and 2020. This was a total of 453 students. And the first question that we ask is if anybody's ever been bullied? And that's more than 50% of the students. If anybody's been bullied specifically due to their demographics, that's over 60%. Have you ever been stalked? That's over 60% of the students said that they have been. Have you ever experienced tactics of teen dating violence? Now, that is what we have been talking about. And that is 31.99%, which is exactly at the average nationally. So whether you want to believe that it's happening in the city or in the schools or, or in America or around the world, it is happening. And it's happening within the schools. And these are the people that were honest and actually participating in the survey. A lot of times with students, as fun and as creative and as how, how much they can offer us and us learning and part of our education. You know, sometimes they don't want to participate, and that's okay, too. All of our services are voluntary. And I just want to have a conversation, just like I'm having a conversation with you guys now. I really enjoy my job, and I really enjoy talking about what we do. But like I said, this, just like the national averages, though a lot of times, things go unreported. So that's something to keep in mind as well as we go through and as we talk about what abuse is, what the red flags are, and what's going on in our area. Has anyone ever made you engage in any unwanted sexual act? Out of the 453 students, 26% of them said yes, which is higher than the national average. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And the most important statistic on here, before I move on to the next slide, is something that I want just to stress to everybody that is here. Would you use this information to help a friend? And 88% of the students said yes. So that's the most important one. That's why we're here. That's why I get excited about my job is because 88% of them said that they would help a friend. So if the, if the national average is one out of three, then that means that one of their friends is going to be able to help them. And if we give them the tools to do so, then they're going to, hopefully, that will help the one out of three because that hurts my heart, and I'm sure it hurts everybody else's heart on this call right now. So what are we doing about all of this? Like I said, we'd go into the schools and we do Healthy Relationships presentations. Within the presentation, we start from the ground up, talking about boundaries, how to have a healthy relationship, what's okay, what's not okay, what is a red flag, what is abuse, what are the tactics of power and control, and how to help a friend, like I just stressed in the last slide. Some other things that we do, like awareness events, table events. A lot of times, I would sit in the cafeteria with all of my little papers about dating and just wait for students to come up and talk to me about their boyfriend or their girlfriend, or maybe a friend or something they're experiencing at home. We just want to make sure that we're a resource and we're available and that, you know, people can recognize what Avalon Youth Services is and how we're here to help. Like I said, ours, our, our services are more on the prevention side. We want to make sure that these students know what a healthy relationship is and how to have a healthy relationship. And how I keep stressing, how to help a friend if the friend is in an unhealthy abusive relationship. We're here to service crisis intervention and support that along the lines of accompaniment, response, support services for youth up to 22 years old. It's a lot of services. Some of them look a lot different with the pandemic, but we want to make sure that we're available for these students. And like I said, we've made most everything virtual, and we're doing our best, just try to get the word out there because like one out of three is still happening regardless if we're in the school or we're at the school. Whether the students can see each other or not, the one out of three is still, still going on. Kids are not going to stop dating just because there's a pandemic. So, and especially with February, we're talking about Valentine's Day and happiness. We want to make sure that we talk about teen dating and the dangers of teen dating, like teen dating violence. Youth Leadership Council, this is looking a little different this year with the pandemic, but this is really focusing on how to make youth leaders within the school to make sure that they know how to help a friend, like I keep saying over and over again. A lot of students, if, if you have kids or you're familiar with, with children and youth and teenagers, a lot of time, they're going to go to their best friend before they go to a counselor or before they go see their teacher or their parent. And that's typical behavior of a student that age. And we want to make sure that we equip them with the right tools so that they can help their friend successfully because this is dangerous. Whether, whether this is a 15-year-old or a 55-year-old, violence is violence. So we want to make sure that we reach these students where they're at. And part of reaching them where they're at is to make sure they're equipped to handle, how to help a friend, and who to go to for help, which is, which is us. Like I said, we are mostly virtual because of the pandemic. We do have some groups right now. They're with a lot of younger students, but like I said, we're more on the prevention side and how to have a healthy relationship. And that can start as early as six. There are ground rules and foundations to have a healthy relationship. And the sooner that we talk about it, and the sooner that we're able to just have a conversation about what's okay and what's not okay, is going to be better for, for the youth in the long run so that they're prepared. Okay. When we go through the Healthy Relationship presentation, we go through the power and control wheel. So I'm going to go through this quickly and with some of the examples that the students give me. Just like we are doing now, it's a little different with being online. But when I'm presenting in person, a lot of times, I want to have a conversation. I definitely want to have the conversation with the students as well. I'm not here preaching, teaching, anything like that. I want to make sure that they're prepared, and part of that is meeting them where they're at. So when I go through this, I have a student read this, and I'll ask them what's underlined, what's not underlined, so that we understand what abuse is and how, what it looks like so that we can recognize it within not only our own lives, but our, our friends' lives as well. So dating abuse or relationship abuse is a pattern of controlling behavior that someone uses against a girlfriend or a boyfriend. The core of dating abuse is power and control. So peer pressure is something that I start out early, especially if the students are not like as talkative as the other ones because it's something that is ingrained in the student's head from a, from a young age, what peer pressure is. So this might be pressuring your dating partner to do something that you don't want to do. A lot of times, they bring up drugs or alcohol because it's something that is talked about a lot in school, especially at the high school level. They'll say, well, if my boyfriend or girlfriend tries to pressure me to do drugs or do something I don't want to do, like, okay, that is definitely peer pressure. And it's something that comes easily because it's something that can relate to. Isolation and exclusion. This is when a student is trying, their boyfriend or girlfriend is trying to get them by themselves. A lot of times, they'll use this as an example. When my boyfriend or my girlfriend doesn't want me hanging out with my friends, that's just trying to get them alone. Like I said, the power and control is the root of, of abuse. So this person wants to get control over the other person. Threats, this person is saying, a lot of times, the students will, without me saying it first, will, will say, well, when my dating partner threatens to expose nude photos of myself to other people if I break up with them, that is most definitely a power and control tactic, and that is abusive-type behavior. And also, we'll get into more digital abuse further in this slide because it's the most relevant right now, especially during a pandemic. So I'll just, but also comes with legal, legal sides as well because we're talking about children here. Anger, emotional abuse. This is a lot of times like you're crazy, making him or her feel bad about themselves. And you guys can see and you guys can read a lot of these, but the coolest part about the presentations that we do do is a lot of, these students come up with these power and control tactics. A lot of times, I don't have to tell them what's going on because they know what's going on. They know how people get power and control over another person, and they know the tactics that is happening. A lot of times, they just need a reminder that it's abusive because not everyone's talking about, well, power control is, is natural, right? You, you want, you want control in your life. You don't want to be going into your life like confused or, or not knowing what's going to happen next. But a lot of times, people need to highlight it, oh, this is not okay. Like my partner telling me what I wear and where to go and who I can be friends with and who I can't be friends with is not okay. That's not my partner caring about me. It's not my partner really truly loving me. That's my partner trying to get control over me. So as long as we establish that by the end of the presentation, and they know what's okay and what's not okay, I feel like I've done my job, and I feel like they're more prepared for their dating life, whether they're doing it now or later, or five years from now. They know what's okay and what's not. Digital dating abuse. I wanted to highlight this because this is how the students are talking to each other the most just because they're not in school and they're not out in the community because of the pandemic. So digital dating abuse is the use of technology, like texting, social media, to bully, harass, stalk, or intimidate a pervert. One of the biggest examples that the students use of power and control comes to their phone. A lot of them talk about, you know, my partner took my phone, looked through my phone. My partner told me I'm not allowed to like anybody's posts on social media. My partner told me I had to block this person on Snapchat. My partner told me I need to delete my Snapchat or something like that. A lot, a lot of the power and control tactics that we just saw on the previous slide are relatable to the digital dating abuse that we're talking about here. And now with COVID-19, I'm sure that's, that's the only way that these students are communicating. So this is, this is where a lot of this power and control is happening. And what's scarier about it is that they don't have their friends and their family and their teachers to kind of observe what's going on. This is all pretty private, especially on the phone. I know some parents probably have some specific apps or maybe they're, they're monitoring their phones and different things like that, but not, not everybody is. So this is something to be mindful. I have emboldened here that COVID-19 puts people at a higher risk for abuse. Like Teresa had mentioned earlier that the calls are going up and they're being more dangerous, especially digital abuse because nearly everything is online. So it's something to think about. I talk, I talk about social media all the time because it's, it's something that the students are experiencing and, like I said, using the power and control tactics. And a lot of it, as we mentioned before, like 60% of them have been stalked. And I'm sure if we asked the question again of like where and how they've been stalked, I guarantee it's online. The way that they talk about, and how I ask the question too, when it comes to certain direct messages they have, like, hey, where are you? What are you doing? Just try to be mindful of what they're posting and who they're posting with and not to give too much information because that is, that is scary. And though, though we're staying in the home now, there are times where people are alone, and 60% of them have said they've been stalked. So like I said, and those are the only people that have shared because a lot of things go unreported. Sexting, like I had previously mentioned before, this is a big topic of conversation, especially in the high school level. I found one in five teen girls have been electronically sending or post nude pictures of themselves to another person, which is very true. We just did one of our Healthy Relationships presentations, a virtual one. And out of 14 students, five of them had shared that they had sent a nude photo to somebody. The scariest part of that is that there are legal consequences. I got this information from loveisrespect.org. I mean, it's mentioning, it's mentioning that it could be considered child pornography. But when we talk about it within the schools, we talk about how it is considered in the state of Virginia. We are all here, no matter what school I go to, it's, it's in the state of Virginia. And though the student is considered a minor in the picture, they're going to be charged as an adult for the crime. So those that are considered, considered a child in the picture, they can be charged as an adult here in Virginia. So it's something to consider. It's a topic of conversation to have with teenagers because there are some serious legal consequences to sexting in the state of Virginia. Other states have different, different legal, legal sides of different things. But here in the state of Virginia, it's something that is happening. And a lot of times, we have the resource officer of the school talk about it a little bit better because it's better when somebody is in uniform and talking about what's right and what's wrong on the legal side than, than me going in there saying, please don't do it. But also texting, like I said, is another use of power and control. And that's when they're saying like, hey, where are you at? What are you doing? Who are you with type things, or when they show up unannounced because you had put on your Snapchat that you were, that you were at the mall, and then all of a sudden, your partner shows up. So it's something to keep in mind, and it's definitely a topic of conversation to have over and over and over with the youth because this is, this is what's going on. This is how power and control is being used right now in this pandemic and before the pandemic and after the pandemic. Everybody has a cell phone. Everybody's using it, and how awesome cell phones can be. And making sure safely, making sure people get home and people are okay, and they have contact with their parent. This is also a tool that people can use for power and control. So it's something to talk about with, with the youth. How can you guys help? And you're watching these with, with students. If you have, if you have your own children, or if you're an educator, or if you're just interested in the topic, you guys play the biggest role in, in reaching these students because you are in their support system. You are the people that they are mentored by, and you are the people they care about and that they love. And it's a lot easier to have a hard conversation with somebody that you care about and that you love than some stranger. What you guys can do is help understand how to have a healthy relationship, learn and recognize the signs of unhealthy relationships and abuse. If you guys have any questions or want any handouts or any type of icebreaker to have this conversation with the youth, I more than encourage you guys to have a conversation with us here at Avalon Youth Services, or if you want us to do a presentation, whether it be virtual or in-person after the pandemic when it's safe, we are happy to go out there and spread awareness to the issues and how to prevent it and just educate people on how to have a healthy relationship. Like I said, I love what I do. Like I said, I love what I do. Um, the conversations that I have daily with students are fun and it's exciting. Um, but also, like you guys are hearing these statistics today, it's, it's also heartbreaking um, that this is happening and people aren't aware of what power and control is and what abuse is and um, how to help a friend if that's going on. So our biggest thing is that we want to make sure that we educate these students on what a healthy relationship is and how to help a friend if they're going through something like that. I know I went through this pretty quickly. I'm used to doing things, um, in person and seeing everybody's reaction, but it's kind of weird on here. And I've been talking to a bunch of six-year-olds for the past three months, so it's a little different talking to adults as well. Um, a lot of the information that I got here for this presentation was from, um, the CDC. And one of my favorite resources that I encourage everybody to, um, just check out today, if you have some free time, is love is, loveisrespect.org. They have a lot of information about teen dating violence and they have a lot of information that, um, you can use when you have that conversation with your youth. Or, um, if you just want to learn more about teen dating violence, it's all there. Um, they have really cool little hand up, handouts and how to start a conversation, what the red flags are, the warning signs and, um, what abuse is for students. This is something that we use at the end of all of our presentations. As you guys can notice, Avalon, the twenty-four hour helpline is number one. Um, we encourage our students to utilize it if they want to talk to somebody, but they want to remain anonymous or if they're not sure if it's abuse or not abuse. Um, our hotline is there and it's available for people as a resource in our service area. And we encourage students to utilize it, whether it's them or their friend or maybe, maybe their parents or s- somebody at home's going through something, um, domestic violence or sexual assault related. We want to make sure that they know that this is the resource to utilize. So that, and then, um, this is our team. Our team is really happy to help anybody, um, and excited to help our youth. Like I said, the one out of three, when I first got hired, I had no idea what I was getting myself into. I came from, um, case management background, but you know, it was, it was on a state level and I wasn't sure about the domestic, um, violence in the sexual violence world. So this, this opportunity has been awesome for me to learn about, even help my own relationships. A lot of times when I go through this presentation with the youth, you know, I learn more about myself every single time as well. Um, the power and control tactics, I, I like to talk about to the youth because sometimes, you know, especially if you're an empathetic person, you might be like, oh, one time I told my partner that, or I looked through their phone or I did something that I wasn't supposed to do. A lot of times I, I try to remind them that one time wanting to get power and control over a situation is, is a one-time thing. If you notice in the, um, definition of abuse, it's a pattern of controlling behavior. Um, and so that's utilizing more than one tactic and it's utilizing it more than one time. Um, wanting to get control on a situation is natural, but using it all the time and using those patterns i- is not okay and that is abusive. So, uh, we go through with what's okay and what's not okay and what abuse is and what it's not. When we do our presentations, when we do educational groups within the community. And like I said, I learned more stuff, more about myself too. So it's very humbling. And it's just, it's just a fun time to talk about dating with a bunch of teenagers. So if anybody has any questions, I encourage you guys to call or email. We are here and available to talk about the hard things. I mean, this is February and as it's an awareness month, but it's something that we need to talk about every month, every day. The students are dating, they're not going to stop dating just because there's a pandemic. So we want to make sure that they have the resources available to have a healthy relationship and just to be happy with their partner. All right, I'm done.
Candace, thank you so much. That was a fantastic presentation. And as a, as a mother of two teenagers, it's, it's, um, it's very interesting and it's very helpful. And I just kind of wanted to open up the floor quickly. Does anybody have any questions for Candace? Yes, Liba?
I do have a question for Candace. When you give a presentation and you go through the power and control wheel, when you're giving those like, uh, teens language to use, I guess pertaining to like a situation they're in, do you find they're more responsive and use that language with you afterwards?
The coolest thing about, I think, just this whole generational switch, um, compared to when I was in high school is I didn't know any of this language. But when I talk to these students, a lot of them do. A lot of them are more aware of mental health and, um, the different language of how to have a healthier relationship with their friends or their partners or, or their acquaintances. What I've noticed is they, they are able to use it and they know what's going on. Which is even sometimes scarier when they're thirteen. But, um, it's super cool and I, I get excited about it. But even more so, um, Liba likes, in the beginning of group, we talk about boundaries and what's cool is like later during the eight weeks, they'll start using the same language like you just talked about. Later, when we're talking about, um, abusive relationships, they'll say, oh, that person has bad boundaries. Listening.
That's awesome. Thanks, Liba. Um, anybody else? I do have, um, as we're going to close out, if you guys wouldn't mind, before you logging off, I'm going to launch a poll and it's just a questionnaire that will kind of help us. Once again, we're going to do these presentations, I'm going to launch the polling now so you have time to answer. This is anonymous, so I, we appreciate your honesty and how the presentation went. And we, well, again, we'll be doing this next month, the topic will change. But I can also appreciate, this is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, so you're going to hear a lot about it. But I, I feel as though we don't want to stop the conversation March first. I feel like the, the conversation needs to continue and I am having the awesome pleasure of interviewing Candace when we are done here today for a podcast about teen dating violence. So, um, once, just follow us on Facebook and let us know, follow us on Instagram. Um, and you'll be able to hear that podcast, um, wherever you are, it'll be a nice conversation. Um, and it's also important to note that Avalon is one hundred percent no charge and confidential. So if, if you have, you know, Candace can help me if, if there's anything. But you, you can call that line and there will never be a charge. We can keep it completely anonymous and kind of help you through anything. And I think that's an important resource for parents to have, to make sure that their kids have them. I know you guys are in all of the schools and working on, you know, getting out there, but, um, I, you know, it's, it's, that's a big thing for people, especially right now, you know, how much is this going to cost? And, but I, I think that's important to note that we are able and we're out in the community because of such great community supporters, we can offer this service at no charge. So I appreciate you guys and I appreciate, um, you guys filling out the Avalon presentation. Um, did anybody want to add anything? Terry, did you have any, um, comments that you wanted to add?
Uh, great job, Candace. I, I think I, I learned, I learned something, some things. So I raised a teenager, so I know they don't tell their parents everything that's going on in their life. You know, I, my own son told me at, when he got into college that he had been bullied at one time in school and I said, well, why didn't you tell me? I would have been right at the principal's office. And he said, well, that's why I didn't tell you. So, um, and we, I thought we had a pretty close relationship, you know? So I think, um, it's important what you're, the work that you're doing and, um, just know that we appreciate it.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, the only, the only thing I wanted to add, what I was thinking about is that like this is not a new phenomenon. I know that I've been talking about like digital and like social media and texting and sexting and how that might be different than all the generations that are here on this call. But teen dating violence is not new. On the power and control tactics, whether they're online or not, they're, it's not new. So everybody here is familiar with the type of tactic people are using. So the more that we have a conversation, like you are knowledgeable, everybody on this call is knowledgeable. And everybody on this call has the ability to get more knowledgeable and have the conversation with their youth. Uh, I don't want to say that they're experiencing anything different than everybody is now. It's just, it looks a little different, um, but it's not new.
It, it's not new and I, it, the, the difference, I think, between when I was in high school, it was a while ago, um, is that it doesn't end. So those tactics were used when we, when we were in school. And I say we, and I'm looking around for somebody my age and I don't see that person yet. But, um, they, they were tactics that were used between, you know, seven AM and three PM. And then it stopped. And you talked on the phone, a landline phone and wound yourself up in the cords and then hung your, your phone up, but it was over, so there was that downtime. There was that decompression time. And unfortunately now, I don't believe there is that decompression time. There is not a chance for somebody to, um, and this can probably apply to adults as well. You never have that downtime. It's always, it's always on your phone, you're always in contact with people. When I was growing up, you, you didn't call my house after, after nine o'clock. That was it. Conversation was over and now it's just not the case. So I think that contributes as well and you can step in if you don't agree Candace. But I think that contributes well to our mental health. Yeah. I, it, it just goes, the bullying and the power and control continues on a cycle and it never stops. So I think that's something that we need to talk about. And needs to, the conversation needs to continue. But what I am going to, thank you, uh, guys again. I appreciate all of your time. I know everybody is super busy now and I'm mindful of people's time. I appreciate you, you filling out the poll. I'm going to close the poll in just a few minutes, so if you could continue with that. And, um, just remember, we're going to be here the second Wednesday of every month with different topics. And, um, refresh my memory, Mary, if you don't mind, could you tell me the, the next topic?
I believe we're going to have Juanita come on and talk about power and control. It's really kind of the similar wheel that Candace showed, but really in depth.
Yeah, so awesome. Thank you, Mary. And, um, we are a team at Avalon. I love you guys so much. I know I, I loved hearing how much Candace loved her job so many times. I think I speak for everybody that is, is at Avalon and we all feel as passionate as she does. And, um, so we appreciate you guys. I'm going, this is a recorded webinar, so if you'd like to share, I'm going to post it on social media later today. It'll also be on our YouTube channel. And, um, thank you guys so much. I'm going to end the call and you guys have a great day.